Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. This is Halston Zoning Board of Appeals for September 23rd, 2020. Before we start, I want to make an announcement because we're doing this through remote meeting. We want to give the normal announcement that we make at the beginning of these. Pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020, the zoning board of appeals will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending the meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak tonight throughout the meeting. At this time, roll call attendance vote will be taken. John Love, present. JP Betty, present. Mark Bush, present. Elizabeth Debbitser, present. Thank you. And also for those in the attendance in the audience, if you would like to be recognized when we are at the point of calling for input from people, I would ask that at the bottom of your screen, you use the raise hand feature and we'll note you and then recognize you. If one of us fails to recognize you, feel free to wave your hand or something like that, but the preferred method is to use this. And if you, I don't see anybody yet attending, but so we'll try and repeat this later. But if you are attending by phone and we therefore don't have anything but your phone number, in order to raise your hand, hit star nine on your phone and then when it comes time to speak, star six. Likewise, for those on the computer, when you want to speak, you may need to unmute yourself. So I'm hitting the little microphone button will do that. Okay, thank you. So the meeting called the order, first order of business is the approval of our minutes from September 2nd, 2020. Is there anybody get a chance to take a look at those?
I have no changes for me.
They looked good as written to me.
Okay. And Liz?
Make a motion if, Liz, okay. I'll make a motion that we, oh, let me think, let me think about that. I can't, I wasn't.
You weren't, you weren't, you weren't present, so I'll make a motion to accept them.
Motion you just came up on it.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to accept the meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2020, as writ.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded and further discussion. Those in favor and throughout the meeting will be making roll call votes. So John Love, I. Jay?
Abstained.
Abstained. Mark?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries three votes to none with one abstention. Thank you. What are we doing for time? Seven oh eight. We have, we have the deliberation on the special permit from 175 Lowland Street. I wonder, do we want to push that till after the comprehensive permit hearing? So we're not taking everybody's time. I already think we will get through that quickly.
Yeah, I'm fine to push it to the end.
I can do that, too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I think in difference people's, of course, that leaves us, oh, then the next order of business would be the special permit application at 799 Washington Street, for which we received a note from the attorney who had taken over that case for the applicant requesting another continuance because we'd asked them to put the traffic assessment and rendering information together for us and they did not have it ready in time to do it. He said they've retained a consultant and architect and they're working on it, but they didn't expect to have them in time for tonight. So I have requested a continuance. I don't know if Attorney Richards is on the phone or on the meeting.
Doesn't look like it.
Does anybody have any objection to that or concerns? As we told them, we'd rather get the right information, correct decision. But that, I don't think we actually have an October meeting scheduled, so in order to continue, that's probably next order of business.
Do you have one application that's been received?
Okay.
What would the date of our October meeting be?
Anytime after the 21st.
Okay, because the 21st is the third Wednesday, so the 28th, do you think makes sense?
That's fine, with me.
So it works for me.
Okay. Let's do that then. In lieu of Halloween this year, we're going to have a meeting.
Jay, are you good? You good on the 20th?
Our meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to make that motion then?
Yeah, if you could continue the hearing.
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing for the grant of a special, or the application for grant of a special permit by William Harvey, Third Esquire for the property located at 7, I don't know, Washington Street until our ZB hearing on October 28th, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? In that case, we'll move to a vote. John, I. Jay?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Karen, would you be so kind as to let Attorney Richards know he got it? And I think he thinks it's the 21st, so make sure he's got the right date. And if he can get us that stuff ahead of time, that would be ideal. So we can respond. We've got a couple of minutes, so to kill before we can get to our next agenda item. Given that, is there anything on the board that, maybe the three minute item you want to discuss?
I just wanted to let you know, if you have not heard, that Chris Fracani has resigned as building inspector.
Oh, no.
If any of you have any suggested questions or, I'm sorry, I'm on the search committee. And so if you wanted to feed me any questions, that would be great.
Sure. Oh. When will he be gone, Karen?
He's not in the office currently. He's working remotely.
Okay.
Yep, so he's fading out.
Yeah, all right. Well, Chris, we hardly knew you. Good luck with that. So Mark, can you be our temporary enforcement officer?
No, sir, too busy.
All right. Okay.
That would be Liz. Liz has a big stick.
All right.
To enforce?
You want to be the zoning enforcement officer, Liz?
If I get a big stick, yeah.
We can probably arrange that. Okay, I think we're drawing close to, I mean, Jake, tell us a clean funny story.
I got to listen to the last hearing. Well, actually, I was getting ready to drive my son to school and I said, oh, this would be great. I can listen to last, the hearing I missed from September 2nd while I'm driving. I'm just sticking my earbuds and listen to it. Well, the link to the audio didn't work, so I had to come home and sit here and watch the entire thing from end to end. It sounds like I missed a great meeting. So anyway, when we get into the hearing, I get a test that I watched the full meeting.
You'll be tested.
And I can sign the affidavit. The interesting thing is I didn't realize that, so when we talk on this, we see each other's faces, but when you see the video, you only see the speaker at the time. So if you're an audience member, like they're seeing my face right now, they're not seeing the grid that we see.
Uh huh.
But you're really on candid camera when you're on.
Those poor suckers have to watch an awful lot of me.
Well, that's kind of what I was gonna, I was gonna say. Your face was on my screen for like, you know, a good hour and a half.
I would have gotten a haircut if I had.
Ben, you need that beret back.
Yeah.
Funny hat.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you missed a job to show you I discovered something new on them. But the good news is that, thank you for amusing us now being after the hour of 7:15, can open the continued public hearing for comprehensive permit at Jeffrey Park, Indian Ridge Realty Trust. So a couple of things that we've done since last, so we did get an updated traffic report and unfortunately, it didn't get to the, our peer review consultant in time to have him take a look. So we may, we'll have to continue with that. But I, Karen, since you're on here, I wonder if you might take the time to walk us through what you, your responses to that since last meeting? And then we'll defer full response till we get his comments. But I think for everybody here, it'd be great to hear what your findings were and appreciate your quick turnaround on that.
No problem. So we did take another look at some of the permanent count stations for the COVID counts. There weren't any located in Halston itself, but in the neighboring towns on 495 by the Franklin Town Line and, sorry, and on I-90 East by Corderville. So these, basically, we tried to get two different sides of the project, one to the northeast and one to the south. And what we found was the difference on one of them showed about a 21% change and the other one showed a 31% change. So we utilized the 31% thinking, you know, best to go with a more conservative estimate and revised the counts accordingly for the main intersection that we're talking about, which was the James Road intersection, which is the extension of Indian Ridge Road itself. So with that updated count, it still shows the same level of service. You know, the volumes are still quite low, so we're still looking at level service A for that location even under the no, under the build condition, sorry. In addition to that, we did revise the calculations for site distance, adding the 10 mile an hour over the posted speed limit for that intersection as well. And what we found is that from the west, approaching from the west, it's still acceptable. It does get tight approaching from the east, mostly due to foliage across the street from the intersection on private property. So unfortunately, because that foliage is on private property, we can't ask them to remove it, but some of our recommendations to kind of improve the condition in that area is to implement advanced warning signage on Turner Road with the intersection ahead sign in both directions, just so that, you know, vehicles know that there's an incoming intersection and they have to watch out for it. We've also proposed extending the no parking area on Turner Road to address the concerns of the residents there and also to limit any objects on the road that might further reduce any site distance issues. We also recommend having a posted speed limit on Turner Road in advance, just to, you know, remind residents of the actual speed limit, which is 25 miles an hour, because with 25 miles an hour, the site distance there is okay. And then finally, we, you know, we heard from the peer reviewer that they wanted to see more for pedestrian accommodations as well and a little bit more thought given to how to, how to improve that condition. So while we still don't think that you want to extend down Turner Road, there's no sidewalk there, we could extend the sidewalk to the intersection of Turner Road and Indian Ridge Road and end it there. And that way, it would just be a more highly visible intersection with a crosswalk across James Road. We don't recommend crossing Turner Road at that location because of the site distance concerns there, but you could kind of bring the pedestrian accommodations to a stop. So that's, that's kind of the updates from, from last time and I'd be happy to answer sort of any additional questions that people might have or.
One quick one from me. When you talk about the issues with the site distance not meeting the standards when you use 10 miles above the speed limit, that, is that any different, I mean, from today than more traffic to create it? That's a big, a problem that we have.
Exactly. That's correct.
And it's probably the kind of concern that's been out there all along. So I think there your recommendations are particularly poignant.
And, and I think, you know, one of the things also is that it's limited in part by a horizontal curve, but that horizontal curve also acts a little bit as traffic calming because people do have to kind of slow down a little bit to take that turn, so.
Okay. So as I said, we would like to have the peer reviewer respond and make sure that he's okay with that and there aren't further, but we can pass along. Are there other questions from the board on the new findings?
None for me.
Apparently not. Okay. So at this point, I don't know, that stuff I saw is out on the website. I don't know whether anybody's had a chance to look, if there's anybody in the audience that has questions of Karen at this point, invite you to raise your hand. Okay. All right, thanks, Karen. Appreciate it. I'm sorry we couldn't finalize, but I think, and I appreciate your taking the time to think about some of those measures, even if they're not part of your project. I, you know, they're related and certainly you've heard the concerns of, and valid concerns of the neighbors. So we really appreciate that. On a actually related issue, Tracy Cullen sent some pictures of the parking conditions that had been, have long been a problem, I guess, and continue to be that exacerbates some of these. And just as information, I'd had an earlier conversation with our select person, Tina Hind, and I forwarded those to her as well. Karen, there was a question on that. She thought there was more that needed to be done since the road has been accepted before they can do anything about no park or anything. And I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to speak to you beforehand, but is.
That's okay. So town meeting acted to accept the street. The next phase would be to put together the acceptance plan and deed. So we do have a plan. We just need to do a deed. So town council is working on that. And as soon as that's recorded, the selectmen can act to change the, the traffic signage that's, or authorize the traffic signage, depending on the timing of it.
Okay, and it's, it's now on their radar screen.
Yes.
So that's good. Tracy, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, yes. Hi, sorry, it's my husband's name that's on there. I just wanted to mention that a couple of the emails that I sent, Karen, thank you so much for making them part of the record. And John, I know that you told me to email you things, but I was hoping that maybe you were able to access what I've been continuing to give Karen to put into the file. But just those pictures recently, like maybe the last four emails, were just like a snippet of like me driving by recently. But I want, what I really want to highlight is when it really increases is during the winter months. And that's, so obviously I'm not going to be able to show you that, but you saw the randomness of these commercial vehicles. I don't know who they are, where they come from. This week, there was even just a random car. So I won't continuously keep embarking you unless you want me to keep showing you, but that was just a snippet of what we see all the time. And so the issue for you, Karen, is that you're not doing your traffic study during the winter to see that when the winter happens and the plows happen, that area, that last block of our road essentially becomes a one-way street. So then that's all I keep thinking about is the added cars that will then be put in that situation and there's plowing issues and blah, 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 blah.
Okay, I think now at least the Select Board is aware and have acknowledged it. And I think there's a, at least the opportunity, once the streets accept it and deed it, that they can do that. So I would, yeah, I think we will, we've heard it and will, I don't know, won't be part of any permit that we issue, but I think we can issue recommendations in conjunction with that and then we'll probably do that because I think we're well aware. But just wanted to bring everybody up to speed and thank you for.
Thank you.
Information with us.
Thanks.
Because I think that's one of the kinds of things that can happen more easily than most anything else and probably have a bigger effect than a lot of other stuff that we've talked about. Okay, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Are there any other questions or at this point, comments relative to traffic that anyone cares to make? Okay. The other issue that we think is we received an updated stormwater report and I'm afraid I looked at it, but I don't know quite what changed. So I wonder whether you might, Sir Harrison or Mr. Truax, give us a summary of what's new and different about that.
Sure. The record Rob Truax of GL. Revised report was to just address the last few comments that were outstanding from the review consultant. The biggest change that took place was from the comments of the Conservation Commission, where the roadway crossing over the wetland, we had an 18-inch pipe. And what we now have is a four-foot wide bottomless box covered going through that wetland crossing area where the stream is. So that was something that came up in the conservation meetings. So that was the biggest change as far as the stormwater and drainage system goes. I would point out to Mr. Chairman that we had a conservation meeting last night on the project. They did have a chance to review all those revisions and they did vote to close and approve the project last night. So the Conservation Commission has closed and approved at this point in time. So other than that, there really weren't any major changes to the, to the site plan itself, though were really the issues and just trying to address the last remaining technical comments that were outstanding from the review consultant.
Okay, thank you. So we were, were that. Are there any other questions of, from the board or on Mr. Truax on that drainage report?
None for me.
Is there anybody in the audience that has further questions regarding the drainage or for that matter, any of the civil engineering aspects of the project? I think we've pretty well been through them. Okay.
John, I think Cecilia might want to say something.
Sean, sorry.
Sorry. I'm still trying to figure out how to.
Okay.
Here. So I feel like I'm kind of beating the same issues, but I reviewed your engineer report yesterday and I think number six perhaps stated that the soil on our property is supposed to be checked for, for absorption, whatever they, you know, that it's, it's okay to absorb as part of the leaching fields. We're part of the leaching fields. Now that obviously has not been done. In addition to which, I've sent some emails to Scott Moles because he seemed to be the person to talk to about these issues. I, I don't know, I just don't feel like I'm getting a response, you know, particularly since in that particular area, which is right next to where the sewer system is going to be, I've had huge sinkholes that have recently, you know, for safety purposes for my grandchildren, so they wouldn't fall into them, I've had to have them filled in. Now, some of those sinkholes were up to like three feet and maybe, I don't know, eight to 10 inches in diameter. I'm assuming that that has to do with whatever settling under there. I'm not an expert by any means, so I don't understand what that says about that soil, but it's all in that area, literally next to where the sewage system is going to be. I'm really concerned about what is, you know, I mean, one house, leaching fields, okay, but this is 24. So could somebody respond to that and why hasn't that area been checked? I understand that the, the area where the fields are going, that, you know, on that property, it's, you know, that was checked and that apparently was said to be okay, but my property, which is literally two feet away, you know, has not been checked.
Okay.
I can respond to that, Mr. Chairman. Maybe you shed some weight on it. I don't believe the comment relates to actually testing soil on the neighbor's property. It's just talking about grading in the area of the septic system. We don't have the, we wouldn't go on someone else's property and do soil testing. We did, we've done several, we've been up there two or three times now doing soil testing in the area where the proposed leaching field is. We did it, it was testing done years ago. We did new testing and then we did a third round of testing to expand on the area. So we've done sufficient testing throughout the area. One of the things we did to the plan as a recommendation from the review consultant was that we did agree, and I don't think we showed it on the plan, but I did, we did agree that under the condition of approval, we would put a fence, a privacy fence along her property line. But in addition to that, we put notes on the plans that the grading over the septic field that we're installing would slope away from her property. So everything would come to within our site. So that's on the new revised plan. So we show it sloping away from her property. So the grading, the system is, you know, as you know, when these leaching fields go in, it's primarily a big flat area with a slight 1% to 2% slope over the top of it. So that is shown, and that was one of the recommendations from your consultants the last meeting was to pull as much drainage away from her property line. So that has been done on this revised set of plans. That was one of the other technical review comments that was out there. So I don't, I don't believe, it was more about grading and water movement on the surface. It's not about digging holes or doing testing on the neighbor's property.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm not an engineer, so, but I, I can read specifically what he said, you know, he specified our property and, and I, my understanding was that some assessment of, of that area should be done. Now, I don't know exactly how I can be assured that we're going to be safe from a health, you know, from a health standpoint. I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, how can you assure us that that's, you know, I understand the grading is the other way, but we are literally two feet away. I mean, aren't we part of the leaching fields? I mean, aren't we part of the leaching fields?
The, 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 the plan, the leaching field has to conform to certain regulations. You just can't put a leaching field up against someone's property. The Board of Health is going to review it. It has to adhere to Title V. There are certain setbacks from property lines, certain setbacks for grading from your property line. So all those things will be conformed to. The property, the system's not exactly two feet from a property line. We can't even do the grading within five feet of the property line. So the leaching field sits back, you know, 15 to 20 feet from the property line, the actual drainage field itself. There's grading within that 10, 15 feet, but there's no leaching field per se. And, and there's certain requirements. We have to do mounting calculations on the groundwater under the system to assure that it's not mounting and breaking out on the surface around. So there's certain criteria we have to meet. Just, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a large system. It's a leak, you know, common leaching field. They do, we do put them in, people install them, there's other ones in town throughout Holliston and they, they do work and they don't seem to pose a problem to anyone around the areas. They have them behind houses, neighborhoods and, you know, the only issue I've come across with one of these was from the actual, the tanks, they did put in one large tank and they seem to have had an issue with that tank getting too much flow all at once and becoming an odor problem. So we've agreed not to do that and put in individual tanks for every home, for every unit. So that condition wouldn't happen. And that was something we discussed with Scott Moles early on in the project going through. You know, see, we looked at the other projects, we looked at their designs. I, I've talked to Scott about it and asked him what issues there were, if there were any, and that was the only one that came up. So we, we clearly addressed that. So I, I think all in all, when it's said and done, there won't be any impact to any of others or neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
All right, maybe I can speak with him as well. Okay. So I think we've taken in everything we've asked of the applicant. I, I guess the other thing, Karen, that we talked about was any of the other boards and departments in town. And I've seen a few and, but have, have you heard anything from anybody else? I think that's probably what we really want to push for the next round. And then I think we be in a position to hear uh, any additional commentary from people and um, but I can't think of too much more information that we're looking for at this point.
Uh, no, I, I did put out an email to folks. Um, I know that the planning board probably will put it on their next agenda. I spoke with Dave Feis, the peer review engineer today um, on civil side of things. Um, and he and Ryan Clapp, the Concom agent, and I are going to meet on Monday to have a discussion um, and to put together some bullet points. That will help Brian formulate the order of conditions for the Concom and then reinforce what needs to be carried over to the zoning board. And also there was an email today from Sean Reese. He answered um, in a butter question, but he also sort of added a little bit of detail in there about what he's looking at in terms of planning for the long term.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I think we'll reach out and ask people to, at this point, suggest any of the the types of conditions that they would anticipate seeing on there from, from theirs. So we can start to collect that and draft. We're going, um. Do we want to, what, what, we've got one new hearing plus potentially 799 Washington on the 28th of October. We could do this at the same time, I guess.
So at that point, will we have a, I, I know that in the past, we've had Paul help us draft um, what would otherwise be our decision. So would we have enough input, peer review input and the skeleton of a decision to, to do it that quickly? I mean, if Karen nods and says yes, I mean, she's the one that's going to help us get there more than anybody. And if Paul says, you know, that's a doable endeavor, then I, I'd like to not lose another, you know, 30 days.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we could at that point, maybe not draft the decision itself, but certainly be, get pretty far along in pulling together the conditions that we'd want and then follow that, or maybe we could do it all by then. I don't know.
Chairman, I can definitely start working on a draft of a decision. I do think that there's a lot of blanks that will still need to be filled in when I'm done. Perhaps a lot of conditions that would need to be added, but I can certainly put together, you know, sort of the bones of that document and get us started for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be a, maybe the goal of that meeting is to take any additional commentary that um, any of the citizens or any of the other boards in town or uh, agencies want to make. And then to spend a little bit of working session figuring out what we still need and um, what we have and what we want to have. And then should be able to follow that fairly quickly, I would hope.
Mr. Chair, question for you and maybe Karen, maybe Paul, because they might have some knowledge as well. I remember when we first started this hearing, there was a, a discussion of certain waivers. Did we, did we get a final waiver list that ties out to our zoning by law?
Good thought. No, I haven't seen that, um.
I remember that was like, it was sort of a global ask, but there was, when we do waivers, we have to do it with, you know, specificity as to each waiver and we have to, I think, discuss each waiver.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Absolutely.
Answer that. Um, Dean Harrison for the record, um, the consultant for the applicant. Um, we will revisit the um, conditions now that we've gone through a couple of the peer reviews for both uh, engineering and traffic along with the consecu- conscious Conservation Commission now. So we will work on revising a waiver list and look through the various regulations to provide more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my thought process was that a draft decision really wouldn't address the waivers just yet. And, and certainly wouldn't be able to until we get a revised, that's more specific than what was submitted with the application.
Right, but I still think getting our hands on that would be key because if there is anything that people are still taking issue with, um, we, we want to make sure we resolve them. So thank you. If, if we could get, and um, ideally you won't wait till the meeting, but get it to us ahead of time so we can work with it.
Yes, well, we'll do our best to get it to you as early as possible.
Fantastic, thank you.
And there is a question from the pores.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's a process question.
Hi, hi, yes, this is Sam and John for, um, no, and that's fine. I wasn't even sure if we, if this could, you know, needed to wait till later. But we were just wondering, um, you know, down the road, when this all does get officially approved, it sounds like a little bit, a couple more meetings need to happen maybe, but what, well, we know, um, for instance, what will happen first in the project? Like what, you know, we're right in front of the cul-de-sac on Indian Ridge South. So we're just kind of questioning what goes first with the whole project. Do they dive in there and or do they start it here? Just, is that a crazy question?
No, not at all.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I have not addressed that with the developer per se on his construction schedule. I will reach out to him and we can kind of talk through that process. Normally on typical site, uh, construction sites like this, you do do the roadway um, first, um, obviously. Sometimes you do the whole roadway depending or you do, you know, i- it all depends. Each contractor developer is somewhat different. But I will talk to this, uh, the developer and, and discuss the scheduling or the construction schedule. From a process standpoint, uh, even if the board was determined to issue a comprehensive permit, um, we're still a, a few months out. The next step is after a comprehensive permit is issued by um, the town. Uh, we have to go through and obviously work on the process, which is called final approval through the subsidizing agency. Um, and that, that takes a, takes a while also. Once we do that and get their approval, we then have to come back to the zoning board uh, to confirm that we are meeting all the conditions uh, that were outlined in the approval. And once that's done, um, we then being able to pull, um, actually apply for building permits. So, you know, we're talking a good six months, six months out.
Okay, no, that's good to know. Thank you for explaining that.
No problem.
And in my experience, six months is a pretty optimistic timeframe.
Every developer is optimistic.
A year.
We have to be optimistic.
Right, there wouldn't be any if they weren't. Judy Douglas, you raise your hand, you.
Um, yeah, actually a related question about construction. I know in earlier meetings, some residents have um, expressed concerns about some of the potential construction activities, including blasting. And it was indicated that that would be discussed at a future meeting. So I'm just wondering when that will be happening.
Regarding the, the blasting, um, if it's determined that a blasting is required, there is state and local requirements that we have to follow relating to blasting specifically. You know, you know, we probably anticipate there, there could be some blasting, um, you know, but there's other ways to take care of ledge. So it is a little premature, but if it is necessary, um, there are obviously regulations that uh, we have to follow. And, and um, I've been to enough of these to know that um, most likely that would be put as a condition in the permit if blasting is required, that we need to follow all state, local and state regulations. So as part of that, as a part of a blasting process, they will do a survey of certain properties within a certain radius of the, the blasting area. So that would also be part of the process.
Thank, thank you.
Any further questions of, of this applicant? Okay, um, Sir Harrison, as long as you folks are okay with sharing the stage with a couple of other hearings that night, we could continue this to the 28th. Works.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that does work for us.
Okay. In that case, seeing that we haven't any more discussion, we'd entertain a motion to continue this hearing till the 20th of October. Can you mute it, Jay?
I got it. All right, so I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing for the comprehensive permit proposed or named Jeffrey Park proposed, um, for, somebody's got to help me with the property address for the property.
Indian Ridge Road.
Indian Ridge Road until um, our next hearing scheduled for October 28th, 2020.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded further discussion. All those in favor, John, I, Jay.
I.
Mark. And Liz has recused herself, so thank you. So thank you very much, um, both the consultants that have helped us here and um, townspeople that have contributed so much. Appreciate it. And we'll see you on the 28th, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night. Okay. So we're back to um, 175 Lowland Street, right? We've got Liz back. Pull it up because we have a draft to start with to, Karen was so kind to put together. And as I recall from our initial deliberations, um, we came up with a bunch of conditions and um, whether we take a look at these, do everybody have a copy of the draft?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have some recording it. Non-transferable. I'll just go down them. If there's comments, just jump in. Number two, non-transferable. Number three, provide the building inspector, health inspector and fire chief a list of tenants' contacts and um, equipment list.
Well, I'll pick on that one. Maybe it's covered elsewhere, but I also, so it's, I think it's tenants annually or um, prior to any change of a tenant.
Well, actually might be subsequent to the change, right?
Well, if, if it's, you know, the earlier between annually or when there might be a change in the tenant, they'll never be.
At the time of the change.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Okay, number four, no, no storage or storage of gasoline diesel fuel has its materials authorized. Commercial composting is authorized. Okay. Number five. Any material storage be limited to the block bins denoted in the application or an open piles, no higher than 12 feet. And be screened from Lowland Street with safe circulation issues. Uh, number six, any odor, dust and noise are properly managed. Which is sort of a true, has to be, right? Reminder, you're subject to all other laws that impact this. Yeah. Prevent vehicle queuing, which didn't sound like that was a real problem. Given the number here, and I think Karen, your biggest concern was number eight on, on how we write concerns around the chipping and grinding operations.
So is, is the chipping and grinding different than? This is the site that we talked about that had that, that compost, right?
That's where, yeah, um, what's his name there with the tree specialists coming all times a year and grind up um, stuff that, that was the, the concern was the noise that that makes, though it's limited. So I think Karen tried to address that by putting in
Okay.
hours and um, limiting the number of times a year and giving advance notice so that somebody can be there to make sure that it's staying reasonable.
The reason I asked was you read the last sentence in section four where it says no commercial composting. And then we talked about chipping and grinding. I just want to make sure that the chipping and grinding isn't commercial composting.
I believe those are two different things.
Okay, all right, as long as they're different.
Mr. Brockard is on the call. I mean, you don't really want to interact with him because the hearing is closed, but perhaps he could nod in agreement if he believes that compo, this is not a composting operation that requires a composting permit from the state. he believes that compo, this is not a composting operation that requires a composting permit from the state.
Okay. Great, thank you. Yeah, that's clarification. I think that's yeah, we just don't want to put any conditions that are in conflict, so. The noise provision references is to just our, I didn't look at it, that's our noise by law, right?
Yeah, so those actually are, it's a direct link to the state noise requirements.
Let's see.
Why is there the portable toilet facility in there? I mean.
That's something that the health director had suggested, apparently if they're, because there isn't processing on the site normally, that suddenly there are employees at the site for extended period of time.
I think if the vision ties out, at least what we're talking, talked about.
Is there anything we're missing?
I mean, the only other thing I was thinking you could put, I read this the first time is, and I don't know if this is even reasonable to do, but we could have the activities, so that's four consecutive days. So the only thing I was thinking about is, you know, should we just limit it to a weekday so that we can at least try to maintain, you know, we talked about Austin, a quiet hours, but the weekend is probably where people are around the most. So I don't know if you want to limit it to four weekdays, but then at least you know it's not going to be on the weekend.
Mr. Barker, would that be a problem from their side, do you think? Okay, yeah. My guess is it'd be a lot fewer complaints if it is during the week.
I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, I don't think it was consecutive days. I thought he just said one or two days a year and we're saying four days during the year, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I injected calendar. Sorry, it's consecutive. So I just want to say four weekdays per calendar year.
Yeah, I think we don't need to get too much to not let them know some ability to do it.
One thing I did not address is sort of an overall hours of operation.
Yeah, I guess that has to do, yeah. For industrial stuff, do we typically, I know retail and stuff we do, but you know, a lot, I don't know that it applies here, but I would guess a lot of stuff where trucks, trucks are coming in during the night and things like that. Probably not as likely here, but.
The site next door does have a start time, stop time.
This is just a contractor's yard, though, really, isn't it? Does the park have its own set of?
No.
I don't know if I care about hours. It's not, I don't, if somebody has doing work late and they go in and drop their trucks up and leave, I don't.
Yeah, for that purpose.
Isn't it?
Given the nature of the activities that we've allowed, I don't see a big issue other than that the noise producing on.
Well, yeah, this wasn't actually a problem and, you know, I remember the neighbors being very supportive, you know, of the whole place, which was nice to hear. But I, just since Lowland in general has been in the news, I, do we need something, you know, to say, you know, that, that the owner should direct the heavy equipment to leave via, you know, Jeffrey Avenue as opposed to, you just ask them to direct them there. Then that's the best he can do, I know, but.
Right. Yeah, I think we actually that, that it's existed on somebody else's permit, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
It's hard to enforce, you know.
Kind of thing that you direct them that I think, though, it goes absolutely with the spirit of the concerns there. I'm in favor of that. We can borrow the language from the last time that happened, but it's at the.
Yeah, we, we, we did some kind of like reasonable set, reasonable best efforts to encourage or to direct, whatever that language was.
Yeah, you can't. I, I think that's fine. You know, somebody, it was a different one, but they had a sign at their desk that said that and gave out maps and things like that, that I think that's completely reasonable, given the concerns of the neighbors. Okay. Any other conditions you guys are thinking of?
None for me.
Yeah, and I think we already discussed it, but I presume there is agreement that we're good with this permit in general with those conditions. Good. In that case, I would be happy to entertain a motion to prove it.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit for the property located at one seventy-five Lowland Street to the applicant Herbert Brockard Jr. As, as prepared by and is modified according to our our debate and discussion.
I'll second.
Didn't move in seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, we'll go through a roll call vote. John, I, Jay.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Motion carries. So yeah, Mr. Barker, I think we already talked about, we'll get it written up and excuse me, signed and filed with the town clerk. You'll be notified at that time. There's a twenty day appeal period, after which it'll be issued and you need to file it with your deed, but good luck with that thing and thank you for bringing happy townspeople to support you and your efforts. We don't get that so often, so for the way you're doing your business there. You're in a tough place and it seems like an appropriate thing to do. So any other business, guys?
I can tell you, I really liked being able to review the decision and then discuss it and then you know, grant the award. So I don't know if there's a, if there's any buy-in by others to do that, but in my old town, we used to do it and I sort of felt, not more comfortable, but I felt like everything was clean and tidy. And as a group, we were able to decide versus Mr. Chair, you having to take that final approval. So if, if there was instances where you think it makes sense more often or to do it, you know, as a matter of practice, I enjoyed being able to read it, recollect and then deliberate a little bit.
Yeah, I, I I agree as well. You know, I think there's a lot of ours that don't require that and, and we can, but I, yeah, it's.
Yeah, like a little, you know, to me, like a, you know, a dimensional variance that we in the fly that makes a ton of sense. And we have a full complete package in front of us. Those don't really need quite as much, but if we have something that's a little bit nuancey, I definitely liked this process.
I agree. So let's, yeah, let's make that a, I mean, I think anytime we're deliberating, we can suggest that and okay, and we've been prompt enough with deliberations and when not, that we're not causing any undue delay typically, which is always been a concern. Okay, any other thoughts or news or? So Jay and Mark, you guys weren't on, or Liz, I don't think you were either, maybe you were early on, but I have to show you, as Zoom users discovered a new feature in Zoom that allows you to filter your stuff and do.
Was that, did you have to? You have to add it. Is that an app or is that like just a basic?
No, it's right in Zoom. It's under video filters. You know how they do the virtual background?
Yeah.
That's funny.
Do both.
That's really funny.
Hi, Mady, welcome to the island. I didn't want to do that during the, yeah.
I think we're still recording.
I know we are and I'm okay with that now.
Well, you know, the next one's going to be our, going to be our Halloween substitute, so maybe we can all show up.
I'll come up with a filter of our own for that, so.
So give me a, give me a tutorial. Where am I going to find that? I love that.
Okay, if you go to the, where it says stop video at the bottom, you have that, press that little arrow and you see choose video filter.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, so the fill, I know the background, so it's the, so it's, it's the new.
Right next to it, video filters.
Okay. All right.
And when I discovered it, the guy that I, that works with me that had it, we didn't have exactly the same filters for some reason. We had most of the same.
Mine says none.
Oh, too bad.
You must have. I log on.
Either have to update your Zoom or pay for the premium version.
Oh, I don't know how to get rid of it, though.
Go to none, the top left, the first one.
Oh, okay.
I might have to upgrade because mine, well.
Very nice.
Okay.
Go now, kids.
I have a meeting first thing in the morning. I'm going to show up. Okay.
Okay.
I hope you're laughing, Chris, Chris.
Now that we've deteriorated to that level, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the, the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, John, I, Jay.
I.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, Christian. Thank you, Chris. Karen, thanks, as always.
Yep.
Cassidy, thank you for joining us and keeping us safe from the bombers.
You look like the Hamburglar right now.
The Hamburglar.
That's really funny. Yeah, I know you like that.
All right, I'm out of here.
All right, good night all. Thank you. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Chris. Bye.